Hold on, I'll be right there.
The whole thing, so he got it, Clay.
We good to go? All right. I'd like to call this meeting order Lancaster County Council here on August the 28th, 2023 and want to welcome our guests here, especially our Lancaster six-year-olds who brought home a world championship a month or two ago and we'll be honoring them here in a few minutes. And y'all, y'all are welcome to stay the whole meeting, but I feel sure some of you have got plans to go eat pizza or something like that together. So we, we will completely understand and we'll give you time to leave after our special presentations. I would ask that you stay through both of those. And with that, would you please rise and join Councilmember Billy Mosteller as he leads us in our pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for another blessed day. Lord, please be with us tonight as we make decisions for Lancaster County, give us wisdom and, and open our eyes to what for the county. Lord, we like, thank you for this rain that we got today. And we also thank you for the special guest we have tonight, our World Series champions. Thank you for the parents and the coaches and the players for what they've accomplished and we really appreciate them and give us our main sins, Jesus' name, prayer, amen.
Amen.
Let's move down to our approval of our agenda to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
For Mr. Lawrence, second for Mr. Blackman. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Citizens comments this evening, no one signed up, but we do have one electric, electronic comment, Ms. Simpson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you each have a copy of this citizen's comment that was submitted electronically at your seats. This is from Mrs. Chimsick, I'm sure I said that name wrong, and she wrote in about the 521 traffic at the Indianland Elementary School. She said, "The traffic in the afternoon is horrendous because they all have parents picking up their children and they are blocking the road so no one can get through. Please either make a turn lane into the school or put a policeman there to direct traffic."
All right. Ms. Simpson, did I, did I leave those proclamations in there?
You're right.
Right here, okay. All right, like I said, y'all be welcome to leave, but if you don't mind, we have two special presentations. They won't last long, there'll be one after y'all. The first one is our recognition of the Lancaster Dixie Boys Six-and-Under Team for winning the World Series. And I got a proclamation. I'm going to read, why don't y'all come on up? Bring the team up here and the coaches first and then.
Question.
Yes.
This is our, this is our vice chair. It's great organization. I had one son playing up to 11, 12-year-old and I was surprised a couple of years, quite inexperienced. But congratulations again, I got a proclamation on the New York County where it is the Lancaster County Dixie Baseball Six and Under Rookie All-Star from one of the East Region World Series in Rockwood, Tennessee. And where it is the road to the World Series championship included in 10 and 7 postseason record through the district and state championship games, including a state championship victory. And where it is the team members, Paul Valley Island, James, Lee Blackman, Noah Rockston, Craig Newbanks, Carson Feld, Jake Jettity, Sawyer Freeman, Red Mountain, Jay Robinson, Colton Thomas. And where it is the team was coached by Joel Iron, Lell, Lell, um, Kelly Thomas, Sean Thomas, and Garrett Johnson. Now therefore I speak for behalf of Lancaster County Council to hereby congratulate the Dixie Baseball Six and Under Six-You Team for their magnificent achievements and wish all the players and coaches much, much success in their future endeavors.
Come on over.
Brian, you stand on the right of it.
I might, I might. I like pushing me and you this way.
All right, there we go. Put your folders down, boys. Put your folders down below your thing. Yeah, put your folders down. There you go. Put your folders in front of them. Ready? All right, hands behind your back, boys. Three, two, one, hands behind your back. There we go. Y'all stay still and let her get hers. Everybody smile.
I'd just like to thank everybody. Obviously, it was a lot of support throughout our community, money, time, cheering us on on Facebook and YouTube and just glad that the whole community could be a part and share this special journey with these kids. And like you said, we're so proud of them. They represented like not just baseball players, their attitudes were probably the best at the World Series of any, I mean, it's easy to have a good attitude when you win, I guess, isn't it? But they were, they represented Lancaster, they were, they were role models, the way they displayed themselves on the field. So we're just, we're proud to, to call them ours and we're proud to have a chance to represent Lancaster and South Carolina. Thank you guys for recognizing us tonight.
Yeah, let's give him one. Before I let you get out of here, we've got another recommendation. We're going to recognize Officer, Officer Sherman Adams for winning the South Carolina Sheriff's Association 2023 Detention Officer of the Year with the chair of the Michigan State Dixie Committee here and to present that in the House District representing you, not that he's the state. And if it goes, I'm going to turn it to our other people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm happy to be here at council. First off, I want to say congratulations, guys. Y'all did a wonderful job representing our hometown and hopefully come January, we can have you at the State House to honor you for what you did. It'll be a really cool experience if we can get you down there because y'all have earned it for winning the World Series. So congratulations on that. Today I have the honor of helping honor Officer Sharon Adams for the 2023 Jerry N. McDaniel Detention Officer of the Year Award from the South Carolina Sheriff's Association. I think it's very fair to say that this is not an easy job, that very few have a calling to do. And Officer Adams has done that job brilliantly and has served for over 26 years in law enforcement, a career that we should be very proud of. I'm honored to get to present her with a certificate from the South Carolina House Representatives in honor of that recognition and for her service to our county and join with the sheriff here who also has a presentation for her.
Yeah, it's just a blessing to have someone to work with, part of our team, Sharon Adams. We were lucky enough, that's one of these employees we got to steal from the state. She worked for the state.
Thank you again for that.
Yeah. And she came to work for the sheriff's office, I think she started her career in 98, is that right, Sharon? And, and been with us for a few years and has really been an outstanding employee, a role model for the other detention officers that we have. But she also understands that it's a team effort out there. It's just not one person who makes the wheels turn. And her supervisors, her corporal and her sergeant is here with her tonight and we're
It's quite an honor and that's, that's a tough job out there.
just certainly pleased to have her and be able to recognize her. Sharon, you want to come forward?
All right, like I said, that completes our special presentation. So if you want to go leave and eat pizza or go somewhere, this is your opportunity to leave. So thank y'all.
And Steve, send, send the bill to Steve. I said, tell Steve.
You're welcome to stay.
Send the bill. Send the pizza bill to you.
All right.
I just like to say, too, just like we got a bunch of upcoming pictures here.
It's quite an honor and that's, that's a tough job out there. All right, like I said, that completes our special presentation. So if you want to go leave and eat pizza or go somewhere, this is your opportunity to leave. So thank y'all.
And Steve, send, send the bill to Steve. I said, tell Steve.
You're welcome to stay.
Send the bill.
Charlie said this.
Send the pizza bill to you.
Let's move down to number seven, our consent agenda to have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, 7G, and 7H.
I have a motion from Mr. Mosteller, second from Ms. McGriff. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our consent agenda this evening. Let's move down to our non-consent agenda as we have a good many resolutions regarding annual assessment rolls. So our first one is Resolution 1245-R 2023 regarding approving the annual assessment roll for the Edgewater Improvement District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes, second for Ms. McGriff, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Of course, you know that this is an annual action of county council for the life of these assessment district revenue bonds. We have six overall assessment district revenue bonds and the first one for action tonight is Edgewater.
All right, anyone have any questions for Ms. Thompson? Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Have unanimous approval, Resolution 1245-R 2023. Resolution 1246-R 2023 regarding approving the annual assessment roll for the Edgewater Two Improvement District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff, second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Graham. Ms. Thompson, is if there's anything else you would like in any of these on down through here you need to say anything about?
I'll just tell you the annual revenue requirement. That's what I'll just do. For this one, there's no annual revenue requirement.
Okay.
And remember, this is the one that you all agree to amend for Edgewater Two.
Okay. All right, any questions on this one?
I probably wouldn't have seconded it because I don't think I was in favor of it.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on Resolution 1246-R 2023. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, Resolution 1247-R 2023 regarding approving the annual assessment roll for the Sun City Carolina Lakes Improvement District. Do I have motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Graham makes the motion to approve. Mr. Blackman seconds it. Anything, Ms. Thompson?
Of course, Sun City is one of our best and easiest ones. We've never had any issues out of Sun City.
Of course.
Nothing further.
All right, any questions? I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval, Resolution 1247-R 2023. Let's move down to Resolution 1248-R 2023 regarding approving the annual assessment roll for Bond Area One of the Walnut Creek Improvement District. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes, a second. Second for Mr. Mosteller, Ms. Thompson.
And if you can recall, this, this is formerly known as Eden Moore and it was divided into three bond areas. And this is bond area number one and the collection rate is $622,000.
Any questions? Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, Resolution R 1248-R 2023. Resolution 1249-R 2023 regarding approving, approving the annual assessment roll for Bond Area Two of the Walnut Creek Improvement District. A motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff, a second. Second for Mr. Graham, Ms. Thompson.
The annual revenue requirement for this is a little over $841,000.
All right, if anyone has a question, speak up. If not, we're going to keep moving. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, Resolution 1250-R 2023 regarding approving the annual assessment roll for Bond Area Three of the Walnut Creek Improvement District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff, second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Carnes, Ms. Thompson.
The annual revenue requirement for Bond Area Three is a little over $606,000.
All right, any discussion? I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, Resolution 1250-R 2023. Let's go down to Resolution 1251-R 2023 regarding the levy and collection of debt service millage on Reed Point Special Tax District. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Mosteller makes a motion, second for Ms. McGriff, Ms. Thompson.
This is the Reed Point subdivision. This is the same, what we did with Brook Chase. If you can recall, we issued short-term debt for a number of years and then we later turned that into a long-term debt. This is also the year that we're going to issue bonds to pay for a long-term debt instead of rolling, keep rolling over into the short-term debt. We plan to issue debt in the amount of $461,833 and the sale of the bond is on August 31st. If you can recall, we started off with issuing debt, our bond anticipation note of $700,000. And so now we intend to keep paying it down and now it's going to be a permanent debt or a long-term debt of $461,833.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, why we wouldn't have done this when rates were lower?
Under the advice of our bond attorney, rates were lower by doing it the way we've done it. So upon their, I guess, advice now is the time to roll it over. And I think you had a, you had a concern last year about us keep rolling the debt over and so we decided that this year is the time to do a long-term debt.
Any more questions? All right, we're ready to vote on Resolution 1251-R 2023. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, Resolution 1251-R 2023. Let's go to, let's move on down to third reading of ordinance 2023-1845 regarding codifying rules for parks and recreation facilities. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff, have a second to bring to the floor.
Second.
Second for Mr. Graham. Mr. Mostell, Mr. Clowden.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and council members, this is a third reading for the parks rules. As we had highlighted in the past, this is an opportunity as we really ramp up some of our fall programs is to articulate some specific rules for our parks to make sure that our staff has the backing of the rules that are published and will be distributed across our spectrum to enforce the rules and also have public safety or the sheriff's office be able to enforce these rules with us if we need in certain situations. There was prior council conversation about firearm possession disorderly conduct. All those comport with the state law, so we're in sync with those. And then we outlined different situations such as park hours, different activities that can happen within those or not happen within the parks. And so we ask for your consideration for third reading.
Any questions?
So some of these things that are going to be unique to the park system, are the deputies going to have a ticketing system in order to document it, to take to the magistrate's court? How's that, how does that work?
It'll be an ordinance summon, so yes, that'll go to magistrate court. It's our ordinance summons.
So we're going to have a new book for them to use?
I'm not sure if they have one now or not. They should, if they've got like nuisance violations and so forth that are already codified, they should already have those.
I would, I would think we need to ask them if they have it before we implement it.
We've had, I mean, we've had conversations with the sheriff's office and we had these conversations with them, they didn't raise any issue if there's another step that they would need to take or not. But knowing that some of these are situations where they've encountered outside of the park property, so they should have some of these already in their code book. Or they should have them all actually in the code book, most of them.
Any more discussion?
So just for a clarification, on section 2433, would that include like playing with lizards and things like that? Because kids tend to do that.
Yeah, I think that addresses things generally, if there's fishing opportunities, if we want to allow some of the fishing opportunities. But again, if there are these other types of amphibians or other things on there, we just want to stipulate a few things there to make sure we highlight. Generally, let the reptiles, animals be in our parks.
So if a kid wants to play with a lizard, they can't do it in our parks?
Not harassing or harming them.
Define harassing a lizard.
I have a view of that. I think if a staff member views that they think a animal or reptile that they bring, whether it's from existing park land or they bring it with them and they observe some behavior untoward, I think this gives them the opportunity to at least have that conversation. And if they need some reinforcement to have a outside perspective, they can call the sheriff's office to validate their, their assumption.
And the reason why I'm asking that question is I think some of the language in this ordinance and the reason why I objected to it is I think it's overly broad and open to interpretation. It's not clarifying a lot of behaviors and I think it could be abused. And so I have some concerns about that, especially if it's become subjective.
And I understand that. I would say though, we've not really had much, if anything, in terms of rules. So the subjective has really been wide open and current state, this will help us hone in on some of this. And if there is some things that we want to come back to, if we think that there's been issues raised or whatever, we'll certainly come back to you and say, maybe we do need to tweak this some more. But I think that this really, from other jurisdictions that we've looked at, this is a good start to at least give us some specificity or specifics that we've not had already.
And envision you probably will have signs created with the rules.
Exactly.
In various ways, because otherwise, how would anybody?
You're right, they will be posted and we will also have a website and other things, but they will be posted.
All right, any more discussion? I think we're ready to vote on third reading of ordinance 2023-1845. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise? Ordinance, third reading of ordinance 2023-1845 passes by a vote of six for and one opposed. Let's move down to second reading of ordinance 2023-1864 regarding amending the unified development ordinance related to the section 6.5, street classification and design. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes.
Second.
Second for Ms. McGriff, Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir. Since first reading, we talked about, at first reading, Councilman Lewis asked for an amendment to the language that made it clear that the parking restriction that was mentioned in the ordinance was starting at the, at the end of this procedure. So I did add in language that would say as of October 1st of 2023, that the parking restrictions for the, the road widths that are mentioned in this ordinance would take effect. Also, since that time of first reading, we've had some discussions about the ability of larger properties to subdivide using gravel. So I put together this map to put on the screen for you to show you the two zones where the, the gravel allowance would be approved, if it was approved as it's, as it was written in first reading. There's several thousand parcels available in these zones and the average acreage is either 12 in the RR zone or 24 acres in the AR zone. And as I said in the staff report and in the first presentation, that part of the reason we didn't want to put this allowance in the zones that had neighborhood design specifically, like the rural neighborhood, was that gravel's not an adequate surface for a road for a full-on neighborhood. It's adequate for parcels here and there, it's adequate for separation out in the rural areas. But after, after a certain point, when you start making a full-on subdivision, gravel's not going to be a, a good surface for that with the higher traffic rates from number of young. with the higher traffic rates from number of units. So we recommended in the amended language with that, that we limit the gravel to 20 units, the same as we had before on a, on a cul-de-sac end. But after such a point as 20 units are on the gravel, then it would transfer over into the requirement for pavement. We have had a person call that has more than 300 acres wanting to know how they could, how many lots they could get off the gravel roads. And being that there's one acre per unit in those zones, 300 acres could be theoretically up to 300 units off gravel roads and that's going to be a lot more traffic with a lot of kicking of rocks and a lot of rocks being transported onto the paved roads, which is where they do damage. So we recommend a restriction. Put that down in an ordinance amendment, gave it to the chairman or to, excuse me, to the county administrator. Thank you. It'll get there. The hamsters just slow today. And provide a copy for you to look at for the wording to see if you would endorse that.
Second.
The changes that are proposed from first reading, including the one that Councilman Louise asked for, are in blue in the handout.
So this person that owns the 300 acres sells off 100 acres at a time, the people, they can put 20 units on those 100 acres?
With it being one acre per unit, the maximum would be 100 units.
No, but the-
But you said you're going to limit it to 20 on gravel?
On gravel. They could put up to 20 on gravel and then they would have to kick it over into paved, yes.
Oh, no. I'm a little skittish about this because I think it can lead to people abusing intent.
We have good intentions. We're being tested on the intentions.
I know you've got good intentions, but there's some people may not have good intentions.
That's true. That's why we came back with a recommendation between first and second reading.
That is true that if I had 300 acres and I sell off 100 acres to somebody and 100 acres to somebody else are even divided even further, you could have unlimited, a large number of houses on that piece of property. If it's owned by different people, is that right?
No, but if it's just one dirt gravel road going in, the maximum number of parcels would be 20, if I read this correctly.
If you approve the amendment that we wrote on that gravel road.
Well, it doesn't matter about the parcels in there?
If they convert it to a paved road, then there would not be a limitation.
They could come off a main road, is what you're like, like a potter road or 522, I guess. But off the gravel road.
If, if a lot was subdivided off 300 that faced a potter road, it wouldn't count against the dirt road that maybe got cut in that was allowed 20 though. But-
I think what Terry's trying to say is, okay, they've got three 100-acre lots and they're all based on the paved road and each 100-foot, 100-acre section puts their own gravel road in.
What, what we have done in the past is we start counting-
That would only be 60 houses on 300 acres.
You're talking about more than 20 houses on it.
What we've done in the past is we start counting from the time that the ordinance takes place. So if that 300 acres is split into 300-acre units, that's three units. They've got 17 left.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If they separate that 300 acres into three 100-acre units, that's three units. They've got 17 left before they have to go to a paved road.
You're basically limiting the 20 to that, whatever that, that track is. If it's 2,000 acres and they split it, they can only split it for 20 units.
On gravel roads. After that, they'd have to bring it up to paved.
But if they, if they made multiple gravel roads in, yeah, they could go up to a maximum of 20. But that's okay. I don't see why that'd still be a problem. If it's separate roads and distance separation out on a major highway, did it-
It's more of a concern about the amount of traffic that could carry the gravel back and forth and then do damage to the main roads that they connect to. We need to have it paved at some point if they're going to have more than 20 units.
No, but I think if there's, if there's two gravel roads with some distance separation for safety and all that, going into that 300 parcels, they could have 20 on this gravel road and 20 on this gravel road.
Depends on when the property was separated. If it was separated before the ordinance date for this, then maybe so. But after this ordinance date, we will start counting.
No, no, no. After this ordinance, so I own 300 acres. It fronts on 903. If I put a gravel road here and a gravel road here, I can get 20 parcels on this gravel road, 20 on this one, can I not, out of that 300?
I'll be happy to evaluate that and bring it back to you at third reading.
You have to split it in 250 acre.
Well, you could even split it further. I mean, depending on your road frontage.
If you present it for 300 acres.
I think what she's, she's telling us, if you've got 300 acres now, you're not going to be able to subdivide it more than 20 times.
What if you sit out?
I thought the 20 was on dirt roads.
Can't you sell it? Can't you sell-
Paving the roads.
But can't you sell off parcels of it?
That's a subdivision. Any subdivision of land. Anytime you take a piece of land and you separate it into another piece, two or more, that's a subdivision of land. I don't mean a subdivision like a neighborhood. I mean a division of property into subpieces, a subdivision.
How'd you come up with the 20?
It's the same thing that's in the code for the extension on the, that was in the code for the extension on the cul-de-sacs. It's something we have history with. It's already been tied to code that's been adopted.
Okay, so let me get my mind straight here. I own 300 acres.
You got a mind?
Well, it's, it's generating fast here and faster as we talk about this issue. So I've got 300 acres, let's call it a square on 903. If I divide it in half, it's a subdivision.
That's your first subdivision. That's two lots.
Okay.
Now you have 18 divisions left on either of those, either one or half or whether they have.
What if I sell Mr. Harper 150 acres? Now we both have 250 acres.
If you both have two 150 acres, we track back to the original subdivision. If he gets there first, both of you are going to have to pave at some point.
But why would that matter? See, again, I think we're too, too single dimensioned on our issue sometimes because in a rural area, if we take that 150 and all we're doing is putting a gravel road in 150, or another gravel road with 20, another gravel road with 20, and this 300 acres.
Because there's no limit on that if you have 20 acres, or if you have 40 acres, or you have 80 acres. If you do that and you separate 20 over here, 20 over here, 20 over here, and 20 over here, suddenly we have 80 units off of gravel roads that are causing damage to the main road as they come and go. What I would love to do, if you don't mind, is either continue this item so that we can bring to you some examples from the, the districts and show you what it would look like to apply it in the original way and in the way that we propose, so that we can have a more in-depth conversation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with continuing it. I don't think we have a major problem right now to make a decision tonight. But again, I think this is where there's a difference between the southern end of the county and the northern end of the county and what is a subdivision and what is, what is its impact. If, if we're just worried about gravel being carried onto a paved road and 20 is our limit, if we have multiple, if, if I own 20 acres, 20 acres, 20 acres, and we're just going right down 903, that was done back in 1955, and we all decided to put a gravel road in, I just, and it's 20 limits, I think we're all okay to do that. But the poor guy that owes 300 acres can't subdivide out like, like we could because we did it in 1955. I think-
He can subdivide. He's just going to have to pave the roads.
But again, why would he have to pave the road if our intent is to limit 20 parcels on a dirt road or gravel road? Why do we, there should be a difference between a 300-acre site and a 20-acre site. Because 20, if 20-acre site was perfect, where you could put 20, 20 lots on that dirt road, that, that, that to me is, the guy with 300 acres can only put 20 in his 300 acres.
He can, he can do a subdivision like any other section of the county and he would have to adhere to the same standards. You, allowing 20 lots will actually allow for some small developments or builders or developers that, that we don't have now.
Or families. Or families.
They're going to have to pave it.
Yeah.
But a guy owns 300 acres?
The 20 units on 300 acres, or the 20 units on 20 acres are the same 20 units. The impact for the traffic is going to be the same if you have 20 houses on a 20-acre tract or 20 houses on a 300-acre tract. You've still got 20 houses on either side. I'm not as concerned about the size of the acreage. I'm concerned more about the traffic impact and after which it's just not sustainable for a gravel road to serve that many houses and be easily maintained and safe down the road as well as not doing damage to the existing main roads they connect to.
And the road system's closed. Motion to continue this?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to do that. Again, it's complicated, I guess, in a way, but in my mind, I think, I think we just need to study it a little bit more. I mean, I'm, I make a motion.
So we can go straight, take his motion to continue? Do you need a specific, specific date?
That's up to him if he wants to do it as a certain date, the next council meeting, motion to postpone to the next-
Actually, I won't be here the next council meeting. Could we move it to the 28th?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Do you make a motion to-
To move it to the 28th.
Move this to the 28th?
Thank you.
I have a second from Mr. Marsh Taylor. We need to vote on that.
Is the date the 28th? Did I get that right?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-five. I was three days off. Twenty-five.
We could have a special meeting on the 28th. Okay, the motion's the 25th.
Thank you.
Hey, you can vote. You need a motion a second. Does he have a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. This will come back up the second meeting in September.
Can I, can I just-
Let's move on down.
Question. Well, can I just come back? There's a clarification. So in the section 6.14.1 in the new area in blue?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no.
Is that it?
That is, but that is correct.
No more than 20 new lots? That's the one that was provided? And then the, this was the one that was provided by the planning commission. The one that you provided is not on the screen. It's in your handout or should be.
Yeah, that, that's the one I'm looking at because it has a typo. So when it talks about 20, in the print, you have a 2 instead of the 20. So I just want to-
Thank you. Yes.
Correct that.
I see. I know where you're talking about now. It's in that second line, next to last line.
Yep.
Because I fixed it here on the screen. I didn't realize where it came from.
Yep. And then the second question is to Mr. Blackman's comment about the subdivisions. And if you subdivide that 300-acre parcel into 150 and then he sells it, can that person then subdivide that into 20? Can I get a clarification from our county attorney just to confirm that?
Sure. You, you want that for next month or you want?
For next month would be fine.
Okay. I'd also like to add, one of the things that we get a lot of questions from the public for about this is the definition of a subdivision. A lot of folks have come to my office and said, well, we're not in Indian land. We're not looking to make a subdivision in Indian land. We just want to divide our property.
That's a subdivision.
Anything that you do that divides your property into more than one piece is a subdivision of land. A neighborhood subdivision is a popular name for a grouping of houses with infrastructure, but a subdivision is anytime you cut the property at all. So.
Why don't we just refer to it as subdividing land?
Okay.
If it is not in fact a group neighborhood.
I got you. I can do that.
You know, some of us old folks are-
Yeah, it is confusion.
Uh huh.
So if, if, if somebody dies and they leave 100 acres to their heirs and 50 to one and 50 to none, is that a subdivision?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Harden? Let's move, let's keep moving. Let's go to second reading of ordinance 2023-1867 regarding amending the county code related to parliamentary procedures for council meetings. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes, second, Ms. McGriff, Mr. Marsh, stall.
Mr. Chairman and council members, as we talked during the last or first reading of this, we talked about there are some things that need to be updated in the rules of procedure that had been dropped out due to some COVID protocols. Based upon that, one of those conversations around the committee structure for county council. And based upon your conversation, most everything's been stripped out to only reflect council's wishes now that you established. We have it in writing, the committee as a whole, as well as the opportunity to create ad hoc committees as deemed necessary by the chair. So these are the only two issues now up for second reading. And we had said from a prior conversation, we'll have another conversation at the Cal meeting in September about maybe some other considerations for the rules of procedure of council. But we incorporated your conversation at the first reading and now just have the two committee structure listed for your consideration for second reading.
So, Mr. Chairman, so I've got one question, just pointed out, and this council can decide. The county, the council chair can appoint the ad hoc committees, various people that can be on it for a specific period of time and be dissolved into that period. But the whole, but the existence of the committee may be extended for a time certain by action of county council. I mean, you, you get to set committees, which I think is fine. You set it for a time specific. I think it's okay to say the chairman could extend that instead of the whole council.
You know, I think we've got to be agreeable that we're all satisfied with whatever the subject is because the chairman can't make that decision about it. We've got an ad hoc committee. We're studying whatever. The chairman may think that we're ready, but I think that's a discussion that the full council needs to have to see whether we're all satisfied with, you know, the direction that we, that we're going in. Yeah, before you can dissolve the, the committee. This is my opinion.
Yeah, it'll dissolve time specific unless we, as a council, extend it. That's what this-
I mean, if he said we're going to study this for two months and it's after two months, we're going to meet for two months, after two months, we have not come to a satisfied conclusion, then I think it's the discussion around this council to say, we need more time for this committee to study whatever.
Okay. I was just trying to make it simpler, but whatever this council wants to do.
That's just my opinion, Alan.
All right, any more?
Mr. Blackman's point is if, if council felt like there needed to be more time, they could say that to the chair.
That's what I'm saying. The chair calls it, but we give him input.
I've got no.
No, don't care.
Got no dog in this fight.
I don't, he, I've-
Okay. We'll leave it as it is.
Okay, that's what I, okay, we leave it as it is. Okay.
We got a motion, don't we? A second.
We got a motion, a second on the floor.
I just brought it out. I'm, I'm in favor of it if y'all want to do it that way.
Any more discussion? I think we're ready to vote on second reading of ordinance 2023-1867. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's move down to Resolution 1244-R 2023 regarding an inducement resolution for Economic Development Project E3. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
From Mr. Louise, second from Mr. Graham, Mr. Falk.
Good evening, Chairman and council members and others. Good to be here tonight. We have two items before you now. The first is the inducement resolution. And I will read just a brief piece of that to state the commitment of Lancaster County to enter into a fee agreement with Project E3, including the provision of a special source revenue credit. Just some background information, E3 is a US distributor of recycling equipment, primarily plastic recycling equipment. They represent seven European manufacturers. They're looking to come here. They're leasing currently in a- come here. Uh, they're leasing currently in another state. They plan to build a 36,000 square foot building initially for distribution and showcase and repair. They will not be doing recycling on the spot. They're only selling recycling machines and demonstrating recycling machines on a limited, limited scale. Uh, this is a, uh, we, we recommend the inducement resolution. Uh, the department recommends the inducement resolution and be glad to answer any questions regarding that. They are committed to a $14 million investment, uh, over the investment period and 15 employees.
Now, part of this deal includes the county conveying property for $100 to this entity. When we last discussed it, I thought council had some issues with the conveyance and the ability to claw that back if needed under certain negative conditions. Did anybody ever get that resolved? I, I don't think I've been in any discussions.
We did. I mean, we, uh, this, um, project has been, uh, in play for almost a year and part of the reason it's taken a year is because we wanted to make sure we put in place the right kind of restrictions so we didn't have a repeat of what we've seen in, in prior cases. So we have a number of, uh, of parameters here such that they have to start building within 12 months. If they don't build within 12 months, they have to pay us a fee or we have the right to buy the land back, uh, for what we conveyed it at at $100. Along the way, if they don't meet the investment, again, they have a penalty fee that's based on the proportion, proportion of investment that they did make, uh, versus what they didn't make. So we, we think it's, we, we think we're well protected and we're also meeting the needs of the, of the project, but I believe we're well protected, very well protected. In fact, I know we are.
I just, I read most of this. I think I read it all, but I just didn't see that protection on the conveyance of real estate.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you can show us where that is?
I do that offline because this is, there's about 60 pages of agreements here. And if I'm not mistaken, a lot of the provisions are in the fee and lieu agreement and not in the conveyance document itself. Furthermore, in the covenant restriction document for the park, it's written in there that, uh, if the company doesn't begin construction within two years, we can buy it back. That's part of the, part of the covenant and that can't be changed.
Buy it back. Now, they're not, we didn't sell it to them. Uh, uh?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna convey it, sell it to them for $100.
Okay.
As part of the incentive the county's providing. We're not providing a lot of special source credit incentive. The main incentive here is the conveyance of property. That property's been there for 20 some years and this looks like a good, a good fit for it.
Okay, so, so if five years, if they decide they're gonna pull out or whatever, uh, and they want to sell their bit, the county have it. What protects us far as what we give them for that, our land, uh, that we've sold them for $100, so?
So, uh, two things. One, if they fail to meet the investment or the, uh, employment numbers, they will have paid us the equivalent of what the property we would have sold it at the free market. Number one. Number two, if we want to buy that property, we can buy it. We have first right of refusal before they sell it to somebody else. Buy it at the then fair market value of the property.
Okay.
Any more questions? They, they're talking about buying it back at fair market value only after they have built a building on it. We, do we have the first, if they don't build in six months, they can't put the property up for sale?
If they don't build in 12 months.
Yeah, but they can't, they, we, if we deem it to months from now, they can't sell it to outside.
No, no.
Okay.
The details council's looking for is in the attachment B under Article Four, which is project commencement, job creation, retention reporting. Under section A there, it says that the company commits to do the initiate the construction within 12 months. Um, if they don't, we go through here and there's a penalty that Mr. Falk was talking about for $50,000. Um, and so we do have the defined timeframes. Then we have the cause action that we can take, whether a fine or ability to get the land back. So we have that in section B or exhibit B of this under section four. Um, so I think we did hear, um, council's concerns for how we recognize this is land that we're giving up or turning into taxable land now with a company on the land. But hearing your concerns that, um, is there opportunities to get it back if they don't meet their marks? And so we do have those spelled out here in the exhibit B.
I'm sorry. So where is that exactly?
If you go to exhibit B, Article Four, it's at the end after the, I'm sorry, it's a second, it's the next agenda item, I believe. It's under the next agenda item, sorry. The full details of the ordinance that has the inducement agreements and things. So if you go to the next agenda item beyond that.
Exhibit B to the ordinance?
Yes. Exhibit, so they have the ordinance, exhibit B, then Article Four.
Four.
Starts where a lot of, I think, your questions are. Um, there are some other places in here.
Then where, where's the subsection of that?
If you, Article Four A, um, where it talks about for 12, within 12 months, they have to initiate construction, which we define, they have to pour the concrete footing for the project or their foundation support to demonstrate that they are actually delivering on the project.
So mine is saying 18 months for closing for subsection A. Is that what everyone else has?
Does it say page 11 of 31 at the top? Um, it's a fee and lieu tax agreement.
Nope.
Uh, so we're on sec, I think it's exhibit.
It's land, uh, page. Land conveyance.
Page 375 of your, um, packet. Page 375 of your packet.
Where's 375?
I don't, I don't, I don't have that.
16 is how it goes.
We don't have that.
We don't have the.
There we go.
You have that? Now, where is it at?
11.
That's 16.
Well, I got the whole document, but we're on page 11. Is this the inducement?
Only talks about the 18 months.
Yeah, only 16. So we're in a different document.
And this is a very complicated set of documents, I will tell you. So it's, it's not easily easy to answer the questions without looking at it. But we did put provisions in there so that they couldn't get the property and speculate on it and then benefit from that speculation.
Tell us what y'all looking at. That's, uh.
We're looking at how to figure it out, what we're gonna look at.
Actually, it's, it's actually exhibit A, not, it says exhibit A on page 11 is where it starts. The concern I understand from council, which we've heard before, is that we want to make sure that they deliver on their promises and if they don't deliver, that we can get it back. And so we do have these kind of outlined in a couple of different ways, page 11 of the document of 31.
Ryan, what, what is the fair market value of that property now? Like it said?
Good question. It's on the tax books at 84,000, which doesn't mean anything. We had it for sale at 25,000. Uh, we had a third party appraiser appraise it at 30,000 an acre.
All right, thank you.
About $400,000. The property has not been, um, cleared, I mean, in terms of, uh, uh, stormwater capacity added and that sort of thing. It hasn't been graded. It's been cleared but not graded. So the company does need to come in and spend quite a bit of money on grading, uh, and adding stormwater, uh, to it. They're gonna build the 36,000 square foot building. We've met with the developer on that. I've met with the owner, uh, who plans to put the property in place. Eventually, they want to build another 36,000 square foot facility and try to entice one of the manufacturers, this is my speculation, from overseas to actually begin manufacturing in the county. And they would lease the property to him, just as some added information.
So just going back to that section that we were talking about. So if they don't initiate construction, then they either make a payment of $50,000 to the county within 30 days or reconvey the business land park to the county for $100. So what is the assessed value of that land?
400,000.
Yeah.
So they could, so they're only giving us 50,000 for the land?
Well, they're, they have a penalty of 50,000 for not building on it. They, they still own the land. They're still committed to do certain things. And so the idea is this got, this, uh, person's biggest risk is probably failure to get a bank loan to build the building. And that's why we put these covenants in there that if, if in the first 12 months, you haven't gotten the bank loan effectively, you haven't built, you have to pay us a penalty of 50,000 or you can walk away and save face, as they say in Japan, and give us $100 and we get the land back. If he pays us 50,000, it probably means he feels like he can complete the project and he won't be, um, you know, having to pay us fees after that for not meeting the investment and not meeting the, uh, employment requirements. If he does nothing over the period, over five years, he will pay us the fair market value of the land, 400 some thousand that we determined today. If he does nothing, he has to pay us that value of land.
I'm sorry, that's not what this agreement says. Is it, no, because it says, it has those two, hold, let me finish. It has those two options and then it says, "And this agreement shall terminate and the party shall have no further obligations hereunder except those obligations that expressly survive termination as set forth herein."
If he pays us the 50,000.
We're discussing the ordinance right now.
You're doing the inducement.
Ordinance is tied to this.
The FLO agreement has more of this language in there, but if he pays us the 50,000, he can continue own or he can give us the land back for $100 in that first 12 months.
That's not what this says.
I think it's.
It may be the intent, but what I'm saying and to Mr. Blackman's point, that's not what the agreement says, though.
I think it's further clarified in the FLO agreement, but I'd be glad to come back and, or sit down with you on an executive session and go through this point by point. Again, it took us more than a year to prepare this and it's.
Well, here, here's the thing, y'all. Everybody's got to understand. We had an issue with this the last time we discussed it. We haven't had any discussion that explained how we were gonna overcome our concerns as a council. And now it's being presented to us. And I, I read this over the weekend.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to move it to the next meeting until we can get clarification on everything. There's too many questions. We're not sure about certain things. So we, we need to, if we need to go on executive session and do it an open session, I don't know whether it needs to be an executive session at our next meeting so we can be clear on all these answers.
And we do want you to be comfortable. And I do, I do think the issues were all addressed. I can't find them all on the fly right here, right now. And also our legal counsel helped put this together. We'll make sure that he's available, that we can walk through this some more. But, um, the issues that you did raise, and we had another, um, past executive session on this, I think we've got them all in here. We just need to find the line and verse for you. Um, because there are different steps within, whether it's exhibit A or exhibit B, but we'll be glad to find those for you. If not, certainly include them at the next conversation.
We need to make a motion to move.
Any interest in approving the, uh, the resolution and just, well, we got, we got a motion on the floor. The.
You want to amend it?
We can amend it.
How do we do that, um, Mr., um, how do we legally?
You can withdraw it, I think, and make another one. But we can just.
We have the motion for the resolution.
And amend it.
Okay.
You could, I was gonna say you could withdraw the motion to adopt the resolution, take both of these inglobo together because they are related and postpone them both to whatever time. Yes.
We could make a motion to do that, what you just said.
Yes, ma'am. We need to withdraw the original motion on the floor, which is to approve the resolution.
I withdraw, I withdraw my original motion.
And then the, the subsidiary motion here is going to be to take both of them together and postpone them both because they are companion items.
I, I think this definitely needs to, it needs to be next meeting.
That's fine. It's just, it's just, you gotta understand, we, we had concerns. They were never addressed. Now it's brought to us and it still can't be completely addressed, although I hope it's covered. And, uh, but unfortunately, we can't find the solution to our concerns.
Right. And, and part of that is because, like I said, it's 70 or 80 pages of documents. And I, I just, you know, I can't fumble through here and answer a question at the same time.
Would anybody like to make a motion to, can we combine these and?
Yeah, that's.
And, and, and bring it back up first meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, someone can make a motion to postpone.
I made a motion to combine these two items and bring them back up at the next council meeting. Is that correct?
Council meeting and addressing the concerns of council. If you have any further concerns, uh, please email, uh, Mr. Marshstall.
I second that.
Do we have a motion?
Would you repeat the motion?
He made the motion.
Second from Ms. McGriff. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Uh, this will come back up, uh, first meeting in September. Uh, we get this finalized.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go on down to, uh, where we, how to address, uh, first reading of ordinance 2023-1866. Do, do, do I have to, we, we, that's taken care of in the previous motion. Okay. Just want to make sure we're all legal. Uh, let's move down to M, first reading of ordinance 2023-71873 regarding an easement for Duke Energy located on Aviation Boulevard. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. McGriff. Second from Mr. Marshstall or Mr. Marshstall?
Mr. Chairman and council members, as we go forward with the airport lighting vault of project, we do have to run a bigger line for the new airport terminal. And so there's a map in there showing where that line will be. But as is common with these, uh, energy projects, Duke Energy is asking for an easement, um, for the lighting vault project. And so this is coming before you tonight and you can see the location across the property. But basically, it's their standard easement for our project.
Any questions? Discussion? Uh, hearing none. I think we're ready to vote on first reading of ordinance 2023-1873. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Uh, first reading of ordinance 2023-1873 passes by a vote of six for and one opposed. Let's move down to N, resolution 1252-R2023 regarding approval of a grant match for the airport terminal project. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
For Mr. Carns. Second from Ms. McGriff, Mr. Marshstall.
Mr. Chairman and council members, as you see from the second item attached here, we finally have almost a federal commitment for airport terminal. We have talked back in the past, um, where we had been initially identified to receive up to $3 million for the airport terminal. We've gone back and forth with the FAA and a couple of different discussions about what is eligible and what would fit their criteria for funding. And so we submitted, uh, application on July 17th, asking for roughly 2.4 million. They have sent word that they intend to, uh, go with that amount, but with the grant stipulation, they pay 95%. We pay 5%. So the 5% of that 2.4 million is 120,652, which means that they are giving us a grant amount of 2.292 million. They, um, are now in a hurry to get that fully authorized on that second document there by the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September 30th. So. So the note from the FAA to me, which is in your document, is that they look to send us a grant, grant execution agreement on September 12th. So this allows me, based upon your concurrence, if you authorize this tonight, to execute that grant and return to them by their deadline of September 15th. So should be 2.2, what did I say, just say there, 2.29 million. But now, there is a, now, we also have on here, I put in the information, that we've gotta come back to you on September at the Cal, here at the Cal meeting, because now we know these amounts. I said in some prior communications to you that actually the State Aeronautics Commission may give us some additional grant money from the state, but I also said the contractor has been sitting on this for a year, and some of the subs are asking for some cost escalations. We do have a electrical, just for the lighting vault, electrical upgrade request coming to you, and we wanna put this whole funding picture together so you can understand where we stand with the federal funds, state funds, county funds, and any different path we might recommend in terms of project management going forward. So we'll have all that for you. Once we will have the conversation, we're having it with the state right now, about potential additional funds from the state, we'll get the federal grant letter in hand, and then we should be able to have a more thoughtful conversation at the Cal meeting in September.
All right, yay.
And we do have the funds.
Yeah, the money you have set aside in the project account covers our 5% match.
Well, it would have been nice to have known what the total project cost is gonna be tonight. This is sort of like piecemealing. It's just not a very thorough presentation about what this airport's gonna cost us.
And I do understand that, but there are some things that I need your guidance on that I don't have full detail, like they say cost escalations, but I don't have some of those in writing, so I want to make sure that I come forward with complete information, particularly have we talked about potential more state funding? It sounds good, but again, until we know what that actual dollar amount is, I wanna make sure that we have a completed picture as we can for you.
You know, when you do grants, they send you the information, you gotta get it to them, a letter of agreements, agreement that you're gonna do it. They're not on our timeframe, grant folks are not on our timeframe. So because of the fact that we've gotta get it back, we don't have everything together at this point, all the numbers that we need.
Well, we should know right now what this project costs without escalations. We don't know that number. We should know, this is only paying 2 point whatever, so the state is gonna give us supposedly a $500,000 grant from information we've had before. So that could be in there and deleted, and there would be the balance. That would be a nice to know before we, before we sign off on anything.
But you know, you can sign off on a grant. If you don't spend it, you send it back. I mean, this is a grant.
Well, I'm just saying, it'd be nice to have the whole project, it'd be nice to have the whole project in front of us, that's my opinion.
That would be great.
And you've got yours.
But we don't, and we've got an opportunity to get a grant for a certain amount, and you have to do things in order to secure the grant. If you don't spend the money, you send it back. Just simple as that.
And I don't like that.
Well, that's the way it is, Alan. Everything is not one, two, three. Sometimes you have to follow whatever the process is, and this is the.
Process could be, with this presentation, exactly how much this airport's planned to cost us right now. I mean, it's already, it's already been out there.
Didn't even say we'll get that to you, you have an opportunity to vote it down at that point.
It would be nice to have that, it'd be nice to have it in advance of having this piecemeal.
It would be, but we don't.
Proposal. It's easy to have, this has been discussed ad nauseam.
Did you not see a hurry on this agreement here, a certain date, you got to hit it back?
The contract went out, those numbers came back, did they not?
Well, you got numbers, but don't.
Okay, so we know that number, and it would be nice to know what that number is, what this is doing, before we vote on it. That's all I'm saying. It'd be nice to have the.
We're voting on the grant, we're not voting on the bottom line.
I know, but it'd be nice to have the total project.
But to your point.
Sorry, we can't satisfy your needs, but this is just the way it is.
We do have in the, we do have in the write-up here, the agenda item summary. So it was in January 2023, this past January, where we did have an update, as the committee of the whole for council, and we did put in there that the lighting vault and the airport terminal, the total project cost was 5.92 million. That didn't have the breakout and different funding sources, but the total cost for those two together is what we presented back in January.
And the lighting vault was 90%, right? Was it 90% of the total cost of the lighting vault? See, that's just the details that we don't have, that would be nice to have to monitor this progress of this project.
You're gonna get those to us. This is, we're talking about the grant tonight.
Any more discussion?
Let's vote.
Yeah, let's vote.
All for the vote. We're ready to vote on Resolution 1252-R2023. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Resolution 1252-R2023 passes by a vote of five for and two opposed. Let's move on down to our discussion and action items. I would like to appoint Mr. Louise to the Rock Hill Fort Mill Area Transportation Study, the R-Fech Board. Since we do have had growth in the panhandle, we have secured a second seat on the board, and Mr. Louise will be, if he will accept.
Do I need to recuse myself?
I would go vote on it.
That's an appointment, we don't.
We don't vote on him.
We don't vote on you.
Okay, yes, I will accept.
If you refuse or refuse, well, Mr. Graham will do it, so.
He's not gonna refuse.
I accept, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Louise. Now, let's move on down to executive session. We have three items. We're gonna cover receipt of legal advice, subject to attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter related to land acquisition, receipt of legal advice subject to attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter related to the disposal of property, and receipt of legal advice subject to attorney-client privilege related to county facilities' needs. I have a motion.
A move.
Motion from Ms. McGriff, second from Louise, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval to go into executive session to. I'd like to call this meeting, Lancaster County Council back to order, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
The move.
Motion for Mr. Blackman, second from Mr. Carnes, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have a unanimous approval to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, council met an executive session in regards to three items, the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to land acquisition, receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the disposal of property, and receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege related to county facilities' needs. No motions were made and no votes were taken.
Thank you, ma'am. It's 8:08, and could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion for Mr. Carnes. Ms. McGriff, would you second that, please?
We don't need to, we don't need to second. I call for the vote.
Mr. Louise.
Call for the vote.
Sir, I'll second.
All right, thank you, sir. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, this meeting is adjourned.
So much fun.